This is the regular meeting of the City Planning Commission. When your case is called for either a site plan approval or... I don't have a script. My script is lost. Well, if your case is called, please come to the podium, announce your name, your address for the clerk's record. It would be an affirmed vote of the majority of the planning commission here if your site plan or your appeal is passed. And now we're gonna call or roll.
Zawerko?
Here.
Down?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Nash? Nightengale?
Present.
Taggett?
Here.
Hanley?
Here.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from December 17th.
You brought it down?
Yes, you're here then.
Mr. Cloris is here, please note that. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from the December 17th meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Next item on the agenda is new business and it's the election of a chairperson and vice chairperson.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move, moving under new business, letter A, the election officers to after C and D in order to facilitate the activity here.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
So move that to the last agenda item.
Next item on the agenda is case number 131021, Cross Point Chapel is requesting a permitted use with special approval for a church.
Rob Troutman, and I believe it's a new address, 3925 Carolina, I'm guessing, but it's the Ferbringer property, is what we're referring to. And so before you, you would have, I spoke with Mr. Faust and he said he had, the proposal I brought a month ago, he copied three of the pages that were pertinent to the work that we'd like to do there, and he had told me he would attach that with the signatures from the petition from this last Saturday. And so last Saturday, it was a wonderful Miami day in Saginaw, on the west side. I'm not sure how below zero it was, but it was definitely below. We ended up with three different teams that went out and went down Charles, North Carolina, and then the other two fellows caught Davenport and a couple other roads off over there. What I was told by your team here a month or so ago was if we could go out within 300 feet of the building and speak with people, and so we tried to go past that as far as we could on a very cold day. You'll notice, just on a short point of humor, the list that had the fewer names was two ladies on the team, and they didn't fare with the cold quite as well as we guys did. They came back a little sooner. But, but in any case, those are the names. I guess just a real quick summary as we spoke to the neighbors, we didn't have any, I was sharing with Mr. Faust, we didn't have any people who were negative, that were, that wouldn't sign. Everybody seemed to be curious and in support because they were all, you know, willing after some, a short amount of conversation, others a little bit longer, but, but to go ahead and sign and support. And so, so at this point, I'm kind of here to see what my next steps are with the zoning commission.
So we had no opposition whatsoever?
No, sir. I had, I had one family, I shared this with Mr. Faust as well, there was one family, had younger children, which is exactly the kind of folks that our one particular program would be wonderful for, the afternoon kids' club. But in any case, she had shared with me, she invited us in, and she said, "Well, tell me what's going on." She said, "I, I'm under the impression that you're going to run a halfway house in a drug rehabilitation center and pull people here from the east side." And I said, "I'm not sure where you heard that information." I said, "That's not, that's not our intent." I said, "You know, we are going to do classes for people in the neighborhood, and if somebody has something that they're struggling through, potentially an addiction, we happen to have a pastor on staff, and he is a man who does counseling, and we would certainly look forward to the opportunity to meet with people. But no, we're not running a halfway house." And so as we gave her information, spoke with her, she was very fine. As a matter of fact, the page that has 20 signatures, she and her husband were the last people to sign on that particular document. But that was the only person that had anything, if you will, negative to say, which was an obvious misunderstanding after we spoke.
You know, one of the things that I was curious about, what is the hours of operation that you plan on being there?
Yeah, that's a great question. Where we're at right now, it kind of depends upon, it would be nice if we could get the needed funds to finish the interior, and then of course, we have to finish with the building inspectors as well to get our occupancy. It'd be nice to say that we could start by the spring to do our afternoon kids' club. If that in fact takes place, then we would be in the building Monday through Friday, probably 2 o'clock preparation for, because the kids typically are off the bus around 3 o'clock. So you could say 2 o'clock until probably like, say, 6:30. That would be the initial step in, and then eventually, the hope is, so whether we start that in the spring, kind of depends on what we are able to do. So let's go to fall, because that's, that's much more of a confident date. So in September, the plan would be, we would run the afternoon kids' club in that timeframe. And then what we would also do is, as we have support from the community and there's an interest, we do in our church what we call a WANA. It's, uh, kids get together basically pre-K up through fifth grade, and they play games and spend time together. That's an evening event from 6 until 7:30. That occurs one day a week, so that would be on a Wednesday. And then the hope is eventually then on a Saturday night service, and our guesstimation at this point would be a Saturday evening service, church service from 6:30 until 8 o'clock. Those would be the ultimate, as we now currently see it, regular hours. And then as things would, the word would get out more, we're certainly open to have the building open earlier if there's different things in the community that we can do. But right now where we stand, those are kind of the things that we feel pretty confident would take place, and then we'll build on those.
And then would you also have a traditional church service on Sundays? Is that...
Yeah, that's a really good question. Right now, there, that's something down the road we would do, but right now, that's not going to come out the door initially because our current church location, we do a Sunday service there. And so the idea is, what'll happen until that location would have enough people to fully support it, what we're gonna do is a Saturday evening service, so our people, once a month, there'd be a core team of people that'll come over and support that location on say, the first Sunday, or first Saturday of the month, the second Saturday of the month, and then as people would come in there, eventually, I'd love to see it grow to a Sunday service of its own.
But you, you have no intention as far as dissolving the current site? That current site will remain to add?
Yeah. Yeah, that's one of those things, as you sit here too, and people come in and you think about the city and how you'd like to see things expand, you know, I certainly have ideas, quite honestly. I'd love to actually see that be our main site, because it's a much better site. But that's gonna take some time with the congregation and things like that, and so, yeah, right now, that's really up in the air. But to me, we're currently in a, in a building that's just shy of 10,000 square feet, we're on roughly eight acres of land. I mean, it's a nice piece of land in the township, but this property is much more conducive. It's three times the size, at least building-wise, location is much, much better than where we currently are. So for me, I think eventually, that might be a really good move, but it's really, we're too far out to be confident of that at this point.
But if you did have a Sunday service, what time?
Our church, the way we currently do our church services are 9 and 11:30 right now. So really, it depends if you're gonna do one or two. If we do one service, it's a 10 o'clock service on a Sunday, and if we do two, it's typically 9 and 11:30.
And the only reason I'm asking is just thinking in the future. We don't wanna limit your timeframe of operation if there's a potential within two years, three years, whatever, that you may need to do a Sunday service.
Yeah, and that's, and thank you for mentioning, I didn't realize that might be part of what you're discussing, because that is part of it, what we would like to do eventually. For example, we talked about our Vacation Bible School out of our current facility. This year, as long as the building and everything is approved for usage, we're gonna run our Vacation Bible School out of that location. It just makes perfect sense to get to know the neighbors, you know, out there in that property, to be able to see the outdoor events with the kids and things like that. So there would be times, even if, let's say for example, we're not doing a regular Sunday service, where we may bring both campuses together over there on a Sunday morning, so everybody gets to spend time together. So, yeah, there would definitely be times, even before, if in fact, we move there permanently, where a morning service would potentially happen occasionally.
What about, I think I saw in here a mention of concerts?
That's an idea. The idea is this, for example, oh, who is it? I believe Old Town, there's some, some outdoor events in the summertime, Old Town Christian Outreach. So the idea was occasionally to do things like that. These are just thoughts that are out there, there's nothing in concrete about that. One of the other things, for example, on that back wall, you know, to have family, families, at least when I was growing up, loved to go to drive-ins, that's fun. I'd like to see us once a month, do a family movie on the back wall there and invite the neighborhood out to things like that. So these are all things that we're thinking about, they're not anything that is, you know, we're kind of banking on having to happen, but they would seem like good potential things.
Hey, and I agree with that, but just thinking, again, timeframe-wise, hours of operation, kind of thing, if you're, if you're doing a movie, outside movie at night, you're gonna be into later hours when it gets dark. Concerts, would they be indoor/outdoor concerts potentially?
Excellent question. It could go either. Our current location, over the years, it's happened in both ways. Since I have been there in four and a half years, we've only done those sorts of things indoors, but in the past, I know that that, that particular church body did things like that outdoors, because they have the space outside, and they have. But they're not regular sorts of things, yeah. But, and these are all good questions. For example, this coming Friday, we do what we call a lock-in, our youth group, so our, our high schoolers, middle schoolers, high schoolers, they'll be in the building overnight. We typically do lock-ins twice a year with our youth group, and it means locked in, they don't leave, but there's people on the premises overnight. So those sorts of things happen on occasions throughout the year. It wouldn't be, the normal use is more of what I had described earlier, but there are those occasional uses that...
Yep, understood. So I have a question for Mike. With businesses and that, typically we'll stipulate hours of operation of, you know, like, and use car lot, you know, when they'll be opening, when they're closed at night. Do we do that for religious facilities?
Not since I've been here, we have not done that. And I guess you could put in hours of operation and then say, with occasional variances from that for special events.
So I, I guess I don't know if we need to do that or not.
I don't think we do. It's nowhere in the ordinance that that's necessary.
Question. On the list here of services you intend to offer, tutoring, mentoring, counseling and so forth, does the congregation do any of that now?
Yes, sir. Yeah, the tutoring piece is something that we will be starting. We had intended at the beginning of the year to start this new program, this new ministry with the after-school kids, and, and we got, we got a few kids together, but we didn't get enough, so we've put it, pushed it back a month, so we'll be launching that in February. But in our current church, for example, we have a computer room that has been built for the kids, and we have people who have signed up, who will come in once, twice a week, so whether it's math, English. The care pastor at our church, as an example, who's really our counseling pastor, his wife used to be an editor for Moody Publishing, and so she just, she's an English Nazi, we affectionately call her. She's going to give time, come in once or twice a week with the kids and help them with English. And we have other people, we have a chemistry professor at our school, or at our school, at our church, who's a prof out at Saginaw Valley. And so Kyle has said, "Yeah, you know, I'll come in and give time to help the kids." So, so we have the people in place, but we don't have the actual program started until, I think it's three weeks before we actually launch. And then yes, that will be happening.
And the adult things are done, spent on?
Those are regular things we do, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Question for staff. Mike, is there, in, in, in our system here, any cause to be concerned about a time limit with this property being approved as a church and actually converted into a church? Is there a time limit involved for your concern?
Usually you put six months on it, but again, the ordinance does not state that. So you could give them a year to get started, whatever it is that you want to do.
I don't know if anyone else has any concern about that, but you talk about a, a Bible school, which is fine, but permitting, permitting this approval for a church doesn't, doesn't approve a, a, a school, does it?
It's a necessary use of the church, so the church would have to be functioning, and then it, it would be considered necessary.
Other than a Bible school?
That's a gray area, and I'm not sure that I can give you a direct answer without talking to our attorneys on that. I would say that that's a gray area. I mean, most churches do Bible schools, most churches do most of the things that are listed here. So whether they have an actual service at this location, I'm not sure that that's necessary, because they do have services at another location.
You don't, you don't feel it's necessary for a time limit from the time that this is, if it is approved, until it's converted into a church?
That's up to the commission to decide if they wanna put a time limit on it or not.
I don't ever recall a situation like this coming up, and I don't know if it's a concern or not.
Well, but the only concern we had was when they were building from the ground up, and we would put a six-month or time limit on it. We gotta build them here now, and you're just, we're basically looking at allowing them to use it as a religious venue, correct?
Right, right. Well, that's my, my question. According to the ordinance, what power does this body have over activities on this site once we give a site approval? If they wanna show movies on Saturday nights, do we have any control over that?
Well, because it's a permitted use with special approval, you could say no movies if that's what you wanted to do. You can put special conditions on, on their site and on their use, but it's not necessary. It's just that they have to come before you so that you know what it is that they're doing, that you have a general idea, and if you wanna put restrictions on them, you can, but it's not a necessary thing to do.
Well, you know, that's, that's one of my, my questions here, is to what extent do we micromanage their activities?
Well, I wouldn't say that you'd micromanage.
I really don't think we micromanage any other religious organization.
You don't, yeah, you don't do that with any other church.
No, why do it to this one? That's my thought. All right. Okay. Do we have any other questions? All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the site plan, excuse me, approve the special approval for...
Excuse me. This is actually a public hearing, because we did send out notices to everyone within 300 feet, so you should see if there's any...
Do we have any other people here that would like to come in?
Or neighborhood, or the neighborhood, or neighbors.
I would do those along with the town.
And I received no calls at all from the notices. I didn't need any, but the only question I had as, as it rains and planning would be, your timing doesn't... Excuse me. You, you need to go to the microphone, give your name and address.
The only thing I respect, and I understand you're doing a lot of things out of respect, but if you're respectfully timed, we go down to St. Helens and try to juggle your time with St. Helens, because there's no traffic clog if we're talking about the same location. Is that right down the road, only about a half a mile or something like that, four blocks down the road, something like that? That, that's where, that's the only concern. I, I, I thought about it in the morning or Sunday, whatever, you might have yours on Saturday, they might have yours, I don't know.
Sir, I need you to go to the microphone and give your name and address.
Can you give us your name? Can we, can we get your name for the record?
Oh, Michael Risley, and I have, I just, you know, I'm aware of that neighborhood, and that'd be the only, the only thing, you know, there's, you know, there, you know...
Lieutenant, can we get your address as well?
Oh, 1914 Durant, so I'm, you know, way, not way, way a half mile, two miles down the road, so I have no concern about that, but in the plan, work, work on that thing, try to get right at that time in some way. Is that the only thing I have?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Laura Propp, I live at 2244 North Carolina. I'm four houses down from Ferbringer School. And I see what they're trying to do is something very positive for our neighborhood. We, we have, as neighbors and even the neighborhood watch, we've been concerned regarding what would possibly go in there, tearing a building down, and this has been the most positive thing that we've seen come to us. The people have been very friendly, they've been outgoing, they have come into the neighborhood to try to meet people, and as far as the traffic is concerned, we live right there. We have people park on both sides despite the signs, and, and it's just, it's, we've been there 25 years, and it's just something that, you know, we know that, you know, we don't get so much traffic coming down and parking from St. Helens, but when the school was there and active, then we got some of that, you know, parents picking kids up. So that's just, that's just the neighborhood, and so we don't have issues with that. And I speak on behalf of probably five houses there that we're all, my in-laws live next door to me, my son lives across the street, his girlfriend's sister lives next door, we've had relatives that have owned houses across the street, so we're very intimate with the neighborhood and the way that it works, and we see this as positive growth for us. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't know I had to be at the mic earlier.
And your name is?
My name is Robert Propp. I live at 2237 North Carolina. As my mother says, she's, I grew up there, I went to Ferbringer. They, I actually happened to be home for work at the time visiting my mom, and they come and spoke, I see nothing but positive things. I currently, like, I plow the sidewalk just so the kids can get down there, and it's, everything I see is positive, as long as everything's what he says, I mean, it's absolutely great, so.
Okay. Do we have any other questions from the planning commission? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the special use for a church in Arlen District at the old site of the Ferbringer School? Do I hear a second? Thank you. Do we have any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a site plan review for an addition at Team One Credit Union, case number 131023.
My name's Casey Tucker, I'm with Fleas and Vann and Brink Engineering, here representing Team One Credit Union. I was here a few months ago, actually, or six months ago with the ATM project, same company. Had a cold the last few days and a little horse, so it's a pretty simple little project. There was an existing, there was an existing house, two-story house there that, that my client bought, and they have tore that down this past fall, and we're hoping to, it's gonna be about a 3,600 square foot addition with a basement. We're hoping to actually start digging a hole in the next couple of weeks. They would like to be in the building occupied by April 15th, so they've really put some pressure on me to get this thing going, so. I don't think there's anything unusual about the site. It's pretty much a vacant, the vacant lot at this point. We do have some utilities that we gotta relocate from through consumers, but we're gonna be putting in a new sanitary sewer system from, from the addition out to Jefferson Street now. That kinda come up in the last couple of weeks with the engineering department, we've been going back and forth with, with them the last two weeks, I guess, working out the details. I think, I think everything's good, I think we're, they're happy with everything we've got. But like I say, it's a pretty simple site, we just, we're gonna keep the drainage internal, we're gonna put in some yard drains and tie that into the storm system. But it's, it's, it's pretty simple, there's not, there's not gonna be much landscaping, we're not, we don't have to add any parking lot or anything, we've got enough parking there, so the landscaping will be minimal, grass and probably some, some kind of bushes that are small and for security reasons is the main thing. They don't, they don't like to get into real fancy shrubbery and trees, because there's places for people to hide, and so they get a little nervous about that. So the space is gonna be used mainly for their call center. Right now, their call center's located in the basement of their existing branch, or their existing building, and they'd like to move those, those employees upstairs where there's some windows, and then they'll probably use the basement mainly for storage and maybe for, you know, meetings or training or something like that, so. We're not doing anything different from what's there now, we're gonna basically just extend the, I do have a full set of drawings, a bigger set, if, if you'd like to see elevations or floor plans or anything like that, I've got those. They're not 100% complete, but they're, they're preliminary now, so I, I brought them along, and I can set them up if you wanna see them. I also have a, an overview, a drawing that shows the entire site, that their existing site is on. Unfortunately, that site drawing there is just of, of the lot and the tail end of their existing building, so it doesn't give you a good overview of the property. But I do have, excuse me, I do have a, a drawing with me that shows that. I would've submitted it, actually, that drawing with it, but I didn't have it at the time, I just found it in the owner's archives. So I guess I'll, if you have any questions or any concerns, I'm here to help answer those, hopefully.
Do you have the elevations?
Yes. I'm gonna set this, I'll set this easel up real quick. I figure out a good answer.
So you know you're looking at a subsequent site plan, when engineering took a look at the first plan, they had several changes they wanted made, so you're looking at the site plan with those changes. Since then, engineering informed me they have one additional catch base and that they would like installed, but otherwise, they're happy with the plans that have been submitted.
So they, they wrote, they gave their blessing on...
I don't have anything in writing, but...
But verbally, you got it.
Yes.
Now, was that the addition, that, what, that floor plan that you had before, was that the new part?
Yes, yes. This, this is a, this is actually a composite drawing, which this is their existing building, and then this will be the addition up at the end. I've actually rotated the drawing so that it's kind of, because their building's got a little bit of an angle there, where they're, Hayden Street, that's. This is the, this will be the basement drawing, where they're gonna have toilets and showers down there. They're talking about possibly putting in some treadmills or something for the employees for the winter time. A lot of the ladies walk around the block and stop on their lunch and miss kind of weather they don't, so they're thinking about putting some treadmills maybe down there for them. The floor plan basically is gonna be some, some toilets, a new entrance, employee entry, entrance only, three offices, and the rest is gonna be open space for cubicles for their, for their call center. And this is the exterior of the building, this being the existing part, and this is new. We've got a perfect match on the brick, so hopefully when we get done, you won't even know the difference between the new and the old. That doesn't happen very often. Yeah, I was gonna say, that's rare. So we're just gonna extend the roof right across, and then maybe, this is the detail they had on the existing end of the building now. You probably couldn't have never seen it before, because the house was there, but, so we're just gonna mimic that same detail. It's, it's really, nothing fancy to it, it's just brick and shankled roof, what it dresses.
How much space do you have going west from the new building to Jefferson? And what's there?
That lot was 120 feet, we're doing about an 80-foot addition, I think it's 80 foot, 70, 79 foot, I think what it was, so we'll have about 40 foot of additional space where we could... we could do another addition down the road if they ever needed to.
But before you could do another addition, what are you going to do, landscaper?
Yeah, it'll be pretty much just grass, yard, maybe, like I say, maybe some shrubbery around the building, but it'd be minimal.
Not, not parking? You don't, you don't need additional parking?
No.
No. Thank you.
And that's what I say. I've got that other drawing if anybody wants to see. It shows all the parking lots that they have. And, and the parking count on that sheet, sheet, I think that sheet is like C3 that has the parking criteria.
If you opted to put another addition on where you store the house down, you still have adequate parking, is that correct?
That I don't know. I haven't, I never looked at that, that annually yet. It would depend on what the addition was used for also. I mean, if it's, if it's strictly employees versus public. You know, if it's not a public space, then a lot of times you can keep it based on the number of employees.
When I calculated, I think there'd be enough parking for a small addition. It depends on the size. They might have to add some additional parking.
Thank you.
Now, you're not adding additional employees here. You're just, just-
No, they're, they're planning on adding, that's part of the problem. Their call center now is they're, they're past tight and they want to add probably another dozen, seven, 12 people.
And with that, they have enough parking?
Right.
12, 12 additional?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, the parking is based on the square foot into the building.
They have, I think they have currently 12, 12 employees that work in their call center. And we're going to have room for 30. And they're planning on hiring a few right off the bat and then that gives them room for expansion. So hopefully, we don't have to do another addition. But there is, there is a little bit more room there if we have to.
So when, when do you plan on having this all completed?
Well, they want to occupy it by April 15, or April 15 or April 20. So it's, that's my goal. Now, I probably won't be 100% complete because I'm going to probably wait to do the brickwork once it warms up so I don't have to pay for the winter conditions. So depending on spring, if it ever comes, maybe May, June is when we get in there and finish up the brickwork on the outside.
July 1st would be done, completed?
Oh, I hope so, yeah, yeah, yeah. They got, yeah. I'm going to be doing that along with the engineering part of it. I'll, I'll be doing the construction also. I'll be heading up that. So I got to get, I got to get that.
Move that thread to my first position.
As long as I can get started, let me rephrase. As long as I can get started in February and make it happen for the owner by April 15. If for some reason we get, because I've got, I've got an underground gas line, an underground electric line, overhead electric line that runs across the end of that building. So if I can't get consumers to move this stuff in time, and I'm not going to be able to start digging until March, I'm not going to be able to make it happen to, happen for April. So at that point, then, I'm not going to push things. So we probably wait until spring to save $10,000 on winter protection. So at that point, I find I need to start construction by April.
So you'll think you'll have it done by July 1st?
Yes, I do. But I'm just wondering.
Are you going to tell us July 31st?
No, I think July 1st. I think I, I, I'm afraid to say that because I don't know. I imagine you don't know, but-
They give you six months, okay. They're just saying.
Well, put it this way, if I'm not, I'll come back and ask for a couple more. No, I'm, I'm hoping to be done by then. So.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Are you done with your presentation?
Yes. Just if you guys have questions or anything.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the site plan for the addition to the Team One Credit Union with a completion date of 7/1 of 2014?
So moved.
Do I hear any other discussion on this? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a rezoning from M1 Light Industrial to B1 Local Business. And this area is along Duran Street from Davenport South to Genesee. If you look at the attached map that you have, I'm not real good on my colors, but I guess I'd call that lavender. That's the area that we're talking about. The reason for the rezoning, and this is a city-initiated plan, is that there are no industries in that two-block area currently. I believe that that district is a holdover from when the railroad line used to run through that area. And the master plan shows that, which is the second map that you have, shows that that area should be converted to what they call community, I believe it's called community neighborhood businesses, which local business is the closest that we have zoning-wise. It takes in about a half a block area west of Duran, and like I said, between Davenport and Genesee.
All the property due west of that, is that still owned by the railroad?
Most of it is still owned by the railroad.
The railroad property deemed M1?
No, the railroad, because it's an abandoned railroad, we have many different zonings for, for the railroad throughout the city. If you look at the northeast or northwest part of that map, you'll see that it is attached to another B1 district that's already there. And the other districts vary from R2 to R01 Restricted Office to, I believe there's some R3 in there as well. So most of the surrounding area is residential currently.
Why would the railroad continue to own that, longer?
The best, the best I can tell you is I talked to someone from the railroad on another case about a year ago. And I mentioned to him that we had all of this property in Saginaw, just like they do in pretty much every community in the country. And he said, I wish I had the staff to go and market it. Because he says, you don't, you wouldn't believe how many tax bills I get on parcels for $5 and $6 a year.
Maybe the city should make them an offer. $10.
Or maybe the neighboring, either residents or business should-
Even more.
Right.
Pay taxes on it.
The marketing should be on our part, not on theirs.
$5 a year? Is that all?
Vacant land.
So is that strip right behind these buildings?
Right. It, the railroad property kind of narrows down in places, and then it's wider in other areas throughout that area. They also own a large, a long strip of area to the north of there that's all residential. And people have been, people have encroached and built garages and sheds on railroad property. A lot of times, it's hard to find anyone in the railroad to even talk to. I've found that over the years.
Like banks and port coast properties.
And a lot of their legal descriptions are very poor because the, when Michigan was settled back in the 1850s, a good part of the state was sold to the railroads or given to the railroads. And as the railroad sold that off, there weren't descriptions for what remains. So for me to get this legal description together, it took some research on where the quarter section was and things like that. Because the description on those individual parcels just described the whole strip of land, not each individual parcel.
Something's amiss though when they tell you they don't have the manpower to sell it. Yet if a person wants to buy it, they can't communicate with anybody to, to, to accept an offer.
It's just hard finding the right person.
And when you're the right person, you keep their name, huh? Until they retire?
I wrote down three names the last time I talked to people because I accomplished what I needed them to do.
There you go. All right. Any discussion about this agenda item from us?
I've got some questions, just my, general. And I didn't think I was ever, I hope I don't embarrass myself or embarrass you either. What is the difference between the light-
We just need your name again.
Oh, Michael Risley. And that, that, them two blocks has no address to me. But I, I live down the street, and I wonder what light duty was and local business. I didn't understand that. The previous blocks that were, used to be an old city dairy that got, changed down to a clothing store. The three would be, that'd be really interested, be the Wally's King. A new gentleman just bought the gray house. It used to be the photographer. And the photographer sold to this other gentleman who lives right across the street. He retains two houses on Duran. And actually, you'd have to read, actually, I have Mel and Boyd in any of this, but I just want to know what that question was, that we wanted to learn how this procedure runs, actually.
Okay. Well, as it stands right now, that if it were zoned as M1, that's manufacturing, there could be a manufacturer that could come in that place without, you know, they'd come to us, we'd approve it. And if someone else wanted to put something else in there, such as just a regular standalone business, they would have to come to us and say, okay, in this M1 district, I want to put just a regular business. We would have to come back. They would come to us, and we would say, okay, you can put that business that doesn't conform there, and we'll let you do that. What we're saying now is we're wanting, what, what the staff is saying is, let's make everything uniform. If there's businesses there now, then let's rezone it as business. Nothing's actually changing, other than it's going to be rezoned to business. You have businesses there now, but they come to us and ask if we can do business there.
Usually, that would be a two-step process. They'd have to go to the zoning board of appeals first and get approval to have a business in an M1 district.
Well, I'd hate to stop any progress. If, if next year come in there, or Merrill come in there and say, we want to throw, you know, I, you know, I'd be more than welcome.
Are you opposing this?
Hmm, no, I don't understand. But for a business for the city that, that I thought that, to, you know, I don't know if I should even say this, but appropriate for any of them lots would be like, like Bay City had the rummy sale place. If you could somehow coordinate them off and rent them sections out to rummy sale slips and, and just in that area. That, that was just an idea that I had. And somehow, a limit, limits the rummy sales in your neighborhood, or, you know, for everybody has to rent your, your specific slips, the rummy sales, like they do in Bay City. I don't know if you've ever been to Bay City. And some, something in that order, in that, in that area. I, I'm sorry. That was my mind. Because if you ever notice along them area, that whole area is, is more like a rummy sale area. And if you could basically put them all in one area. That was just one idea that I have in this B-City run, or something in that order. If I'm even supposed to say things like this at these kind of meetings. But I have no proposal, but I just want to know, that's the difference between the light. It, it has to do with hourly rate, like from nine to five at night for regular light business.
No, there's, there's no business that's coming to us right now to go there. We're just saying we're going to rezone it to business use, not manufacturing.
That doesn't have no congested with the Wally King or the Ugly Fish?
No, he's already zoned.
He's there. He's already there.
Okay, that's all. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Again, how would you propose something like that? I would come to you or have a lady in order to come to you to propose something like that, to section off them, you know, somehow to put rummy sale markets or slips in there?
Well, you would have to, you would have to work with the city staff on that.
And you'd also, the city doesn't own any of that property. So you'd have to get one of the, one of the property owners to go along with that. And the property owner would have to come to the city.
I don't know what the procedures, but I think all three of them, I think the Ugly Fish, Wally King, and the other gentleman are all present in that lot together. I, I really don't know what their procedure is.
If you had an occasion and you thought you would like to put a rummy sale in, the first thing you do is you go to zoning and ask him if that, that is zone appropriate for you to do that type of business?
Yeah, you, you understand, okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the city-initiated proposal to rezone the area from M1 Light Industrial to B1 Local Business on case number 131022?
So moved.
Okay. Do I hear any discussion? Any more? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is public comment.
Do we have any public comments?
Oh, I'm sorry. We changed the order around. The next item on the agenda is elections.
All right.
Where are we?
We're at, your, your motion to move the elections to the last order of business. Who wants to take over the chairperson?
Are we open for nominations?
Yes, we're open for a nomination.
Nominate James Dome.
What?
I second.
Are you accepting?
I suppose.
Okay. Do we hear a motion to, to nominate James Dome as chairperson of the City of Saginaw Planning Commission?
Inasmuch as no one else was, was recommended, I would say that's a done deal.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
See how easy it is?
Very easy.
Wow, I had no idea there was a revolt going on here.
You're outnumbered. You haven't got a prayer.
Didn't I tell you at the beginning?
Well, there are two positions here.
Yes. Oh, there's a vice chair.
Vice chair?
I could have some fun now, you know.
Yeah, you can have some fun now. Do I have any nominations for vice chair for the City of Saginaw Planning Commission?
I nominate Dave Taggart.
Okay. Do I hear another nomination?
Well, then I would suggest Mr. Handley. Are you inclined?
It's my spirit.
All right. Do I hear any other nominations?
I nominate James Knightenfield.
Do I hear a second for that?
Second.
Any other discussion on that? Are you accepting, Mr. Knightenfield?
I would accept.
All in favor?
Aye.
First of all, there's no pay.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought there was a pay raise.
Nothing. It's not in the city budget.
The next item on the agenda is public comment.
Do we have any public comments right now from the public?
Next item on the agenda is adjournment.
Wait, wait, what about this?
Oh, I just want to make a comment. I, I gave you, this just was printed today. The Historic District Commission is proposing a new- The Historic District Commission is proposing a new historic district in the Cathedral area. By law, this report has to be given to the Planning Commission, to three or four different state departments for your comments and any recommendations you may have. There's a 60-day time period to make any recommendations that you'd like to make, so I could put this on the agenda for a month or two months from now to be discussed, and then the comments would be forwarded to the city council. So it's for you to look over now. There is a map of the district in there and the buildings that are of historical significance.
Did they take this to the Neighborhood Association yet?
No, no one has approached the Neighborhood Association.
Is it, is it, they're intent to?
I don't know. They, we have not had any cases on the Historic District Commission for two months now, so they have not had...
We thought that was discussed at the last council meeting.
This was just passed by council, the record, or the, there was a resolution to look at this proposed district, and it was just passed at the last council meeting, along with the committee being approved at that point. So nothing, none of this could be presented to you before this time, and no one has been to the neighborhood district, or neighborhood group that I'm aware of.
Well, this suggested that they contact the neighbors. I would hope that they do.
Just so you know, the part of that resolution, by state law, the city council could recommend that because this is a proposed district, that any work being done outside the house in this proposed district would have to be approved by the Historic District Commission. That was part of the resolution. I understand that a letter is being prepared to go out to everyone in the neighborhood, but that took immediate effect.
My concern is that neighborhood's come a long way.
Yes, it has.
And there may be some residents there that don't have the money to spend on their homes as they would like to.
You're right.
I don't believe that you can force things down on anybody's shoulder. I believe in preservation, but I also believe in equality.
Those are concerns that I think will come out. I've heard that mentioned by some other people as well.
Well, can I write that something like this would not require a homeowner to make changes to the exterior of the property to meet this law? It's only when you make changes they would need to conform to.
Unless your house has deteriorated to the point that, I don't remember the exact terminology, but to a point that it's, it's called demolition by neglect. And at that point, the historic district has a right to go to Circuit Court and ask a Circuit Court judge to make the person clean it up or go in and do the work for them and charge that property owner. That's never happened in Saginaw, and I don't know how a Circuit Court judge would feel about that.
But there is that process.
There is a process to do that. But you're right, for the most part, it would only be if you do anything to the exterior of your property. That includes planting trees, shrubs, painting, anything like that would need Historic District.
Painting, you would have to get approval on the color of the paint if you were in that district. That's how.
Next item on the agenda is adjournment. I think I'll bring this up in case any other, anyone else wants to comment or if you want to make a recommendation to council. I'll probably wait the whole 60 days or till your March meeting to do that, give you time to read that over.
All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
All in favor? Aye.